Ready?
First time.
I heard the Rolling Stone.
I know.
What time go?
It's good.
Okay, so we're gonna start.
Yeah.
County Council meeting now in session. Uh, before we begin today's meeting, I would like to take a moment to acknowledge that this week marks the anniversary of September eleventh, observed nationwide as Patriot Day, a national day of remembrance for the nearly five thousand lives, s- excuse me, three thousand lives lost in the terrorist acts of two thousand and one. Each year, we remember and honor the courage of the first responders, the heroes who step forward to answer the call in the face of unimaginable tragedy, and we recognize the resilience that continues to define us as a nation. At this time, I ask everyone to please join me in a moment of silence in remembrance of the victims, their families, and the heroes of that day, followed by pledging allegiance. Thank you.
My allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, Adam Secretary.
First District David Ham.
Here.
Second District Ronald Brewer. Third District Charlie Brown.
Here.
Fourth District Pete Lindemalder. Fifth District Christine Seid.
Yes.
Sixth District Ted Bilski.
President.
All right, thank you.
Um, was that Pete?
I think it was Randy.
I heard Randy, but I heard someone else breaking it, but I don't see Pete on there.
Pete will be on as soon as he can. He's currently driving. He's gonna try to get on when he gets to his destination.
He's driving us right now, right? Just text me.
Safety first.
Okay.
All right. Minutes ready?
The minutes?
Yes.
They're distributed.
We're ready? Yes, they were distributed. You read them?
Absolutely.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of August twelfth.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes six, one absent. Six or five? Five, two absent. Thank you. Awards and resolutions?
Do you want me to read that in for you and, uh?
If you like.
It's up to you unless.
That's okay. You're more than welcome.
Actually, there's no one here.
Want to call Donna to come forward? Um, or you want to read it first?
I can't stand over here. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number twenty-five, date forty. This is a resolution proclaiming September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month and recognizing Northwest Indiana Cancer Kids Foundation.
Second.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, signify by aye. Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
Madam Chair, on record, whereas each year the parents of more than fifty thousand children ages zero to nineteen in the United States will hear the words, "Your child has cancer and remains the number one cause of death by disease in children." And whereas, in the last few years, the overall survival rate for children with cancer has increased from a ten percent over eighty today. But for many more rare childhood cancers, the survival rate remains much lower and furthermore, the number of nineteen cases in has not declined in nearly twenty years. And whereas even as more children defy the odds, the treatment used to save their lives continues to have toxic side effects. And Northwest Indiana Cancer Kids Foundation, NIK for the abbreviation, the acronym, was founded in June of two thousand and nine by the family of local childhood died with children with rare pediatric cancer. The foundation raises contribution from charity funds to support Northwest Indiana families specified to handle the cancer and research projects focused on curing cancer, which is to hope, help, and heal. And prior to June thirtieth of twenty-one, state border lines prevent who your children on Medicaid from receiving Indiana reimbursement rates if they sought medical coverage in the neighborhoods, neighborhood of state because of the Medicare exclusively in Indiana. Even at that, our state facility was close to their home. And Dr. Conner, co-founder of NIK, lobbied the Indiana General Assembly for legislation allowing for children hospitalized in Indiana ordering space to treat Medicare-covered U.S.-children with Indiana reimbursement rates, reducing the need for excessive travel for pediatric Medicaid service. And House of Health Act Number thirteen oh five passed the General Assembly unanimously making it easier on families by giving them a larger, healthy care network that also allows them to seek treatment at outstate children's hospitals that are significantly closer to where they live. And HDA Number thirteen oh five was adopted for the fiscal year beginning after June thirtieth of twenty-one and any before and through July first of twenty-three. Subsequently, HDA thirteen thirteen extended the expiration date of July first of twenty-five. And HDA Number twenty-four, ten twenty-four, extended the expiration to July first of twenty-seven. And the Lake County Councils proclaim September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. That's a long name. Soon to be announced this day, signed by, uh, the County Council, Councilman Ham, Lee Meyer, Linda Balder, Brown, Brewer, Bilski, and Council President.
Thank you so much. Thank you. I want to stand in front of anybody, but it's a little bit over a little bit.
If, if you're in the middle here, it would better you be on the camera, I believe.
Thanks. They should, my, thank you. Um, first of all, I'd like to thank, uh, Council President Sid and my good friend, uh, Christine for reviving this event. Um, we used to do this here every year um, with all eighteen Lake County municipals invited to proclaim individually in their community. Uh, however, a few years ago, we had five, I believe, out of eighteen municipalities attend. So, um, and there was a lot of work put into the event. So, we kind of, with our small staff and Christine's busy schedule, we kind of had to, had to, uh, forego that. So, I want to thank her for bringing this to us here. Um, as, um, Councilman Bilski, um, said, we started in two thousand and nine. Our, our tagline is Hope, Help, Heal. And just very briefly, what that does is we try and give our families the one thing they're looking for when their child is diagnosed, and that is hope. So, we do that utilizing our parents who have had good outcomes uh, for their child with the same or similar disease. And help, um, is financial help. Um, usually, somebody in the household is not working when it's a child diagnosed with cancer. Um, and heal is, we feel an ultimate goal of any cancer foundation should be cures. So, we have, um, been to Washington every year, uh, except for this year, um, with what we have now, uh, youth ambassadors. These youth ambassadors are survivors. They are siblings of children that didn't survive. They are siblings of children that did survive, and they have lobbied in Washington on the Hill for more research dollars. Um, unfortunately, we had to cancel our trip this year with parent concerns of, um, how volatile it is in Washington currently. A lot of our events took place across the city where there's a lot of confusion and protesting going on. Um, but unfortunately, the childhood cancer world, um, which I have stood with many parents over the years to enact some of this legislation and some of these bills, um, and these are all parents that did lose their children, looking for answers. And yes, it is once again become the least funded cancer in the world. On December twenty-sixth of two thousand and twenty-four, um, we were related, um, actually, on December seventeenth, uh, Congress included our Pediatric Cancer Drug Development Bills, the Creating Hope Reauthorization Act, the Give Kids a Chance Act, uh, and the voucher program. This voucher program would give pharmaceutical companies, um, incentives to prioritize projects related specifically to children and make the children the priority. Um, we were very close to victory, but three hours before a scheduled vote, after some surprise tweets, yes, tweets, the funding bill fell apart. What Congress ultimately passed was a stripped-down bill from which the Creating Hope Reauthorization Act, the Give Kids a Chance Act, the Accelerating Kids' Access to Drugs Act, the RARE Act, and the Innovation of Pediatric, Pediatric Drugs Act were cut. We went into action. Social media stories blew up on the internet. We were covered by CNN, ABC, MSNBC, Stat News, Newsweek, Rolling Stone, and the bulk word. We had one more chance at eleven fifty on December twentieth, the last hour of the hundred and eighteenth Congress. The Senate took up our bills. Senator Rand Paul objected, and the vote failed. We have gone backwards. Some of these research products, projects were stopped midstream. Trials, midstream, stopped. What that means is more children will not survive. There are currently no new tests, um, for cures for kids with cancer with a combination of new drugs. I have left all of the council, um, with information about each and every one of those bills. There's more information up here on the counter. I encourage you, if you have never, if you have never asked your state legis-, your federal legislators in the state of Indiana for help with anything, I encourage you to write them, call them, text them, email them, and tell them to put this funding back and put these projects back into the budget. The one more thing I do want to mention is the big, uh, the, the beautiful bill. Our Medicaid kids, and, and please understand, these are not families that simply don't want to work. These are working families that cannot afford private insurance. We have a federal employee whose child is very sick and has had to pick up Indiana Medicaid as a supplement. And these bills, January one, two thousand and twenty-six, these bills for these families are going to increase. We already have families reaching out to us, asking us if we are going to be able to help with these co-pays that some of this, some of this, uh, funding has been pulled from our Medicaid patients. We have single moms working two jobs, trying to juggle a, a sick child as well as other children, and they need our help. Once again, I want to thank you all for being here. We, we have more information. Feel free to email or call us, and we can go over it with you. But please contact our federal legislators. Um, our kids would have asked them this in Washington. They were ready. They were ready with statistics. They were ready with everybody's votes on how they voted, and they were looking for answers. But unfortunately, we didn't feel safe enough to bring them to Washington this year. So, thank you all. Please understand that out of the forty-six children that will be diagnosed today in the United States, eight of them will die because there is no cure, because we have stopped research. We need to bring it back. Once again, I, I want to thank you all for being here, but please spread the word and, and do what you can to make our kids a priority, priority. Christine, thank you.
Donna? Yeah, I remember our first encounter, you reached out to me and said, Christine, um, will you wear a red cape? Doing the hero fundraiser.
Yeah.
I think myself and Jayden Tommy.
Yeah.
And that's how we came to be friends and you asked me to be on the board.
Oh, man.
And, uh, I was impressed with what you do. And you're right, we used to have those events here. And, uh, it was unfortunate that some of the cities in town just didn't find it important enough to be here. And used to even have a little luncheon afterwards.
Yeah, we sure did.
So, it's the little things that you do too. Like, I know if someone needs a stroller, you go and you can have a stroller, and you give them gas money. You, uh, give them food vouchers and that. You do a lot. Now, it's the little things, like you said, because usually another parent, one of the parents has to stay at home with the child or be in the hospital with the child. So, I really appreciate everything you do. I really, really do. And, you know, I'm always there for you. And, uh, I don't know, if we want to start doing something different, whatever I can do, I'll do, definitely. Hey, thank you so much. We're all here. These are just a few of our angels. That, uh, the first four rows, by the way, are all Lake County. Um, obviously, the biggest, uh, the biggest county on the eight counties that we, that we do serve, so. But we just wanted to understand that it's the most heart-wrenching thing for our parents to bury a child. So, uh, we need to do that. And for, um, you know, those that are pro-life, I've always said, what about the children that are here?
Yeah.
Okay?
That's it.
What, what are we doing for them?
Yeah.
So, thank you, and appreciate everything you do.
Madam Chair? I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number three B.
All right. Motion.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Motion's been made and seconded?
Madam Chairman, this is a resolution supporting September as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. One out of six men has put down, all right?
One out of six. And you've been, you've been tested, right? We have one, we have four men right here. Well, the county audience. Okay. All right, any discussion? Everyone in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
Madam Chair? I'd like to, uh, make a motion to approve Resolution Number three C. This is a resolution proclaiming September as National Suicide, Suicide Convention Awareness Month. I didn't know if there was anything here to receive it, so I just was gonna make a motion of it.
That's fine.
Just because of our time delay, this one.
Yes, I agree. Uh, it's, motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes, five, two absent.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Councilman Bilski.
I, I'd like to ask, uh, if we could, please move up to item number nineteen A. Uh, it's the public hearing for the, uh, Crown Point Public Libraries. We can look that up and get, and, uh, the, uh, because of our delay, they have appointments and things they need to get to. I was overheard your conversation, so.
Okay.
Make that motion.
Make it a, I'm gonna open up the meeting for public hearing. Okay. Uh, anyone in favor or opposed to the, uh, additional appropriation of the public library? Uh, please step forward. You're further?
I'm in favor. I've shared all the information I need to, uh, your study session, so just here to answer questions.
Okay. Um, anyone else? Public in comments? Okay, I hereby close a public hearing. Do you have to vote on that? No, okay. All right.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve item number nineteen eighty-two. This is an ordinance, an additional appropriation by the Crown Point Community Library for Training Day Fund, Fund Number two zero one. This is a library improvement reserve fund, Fund four hundred, the excess wealth for, welfare distribution fund, Fund two two six pursuant to IC six dash one point one dash one eight dash five. So.
Motion's been made and seconded? Discussion? Roll call, please.
Pam?
Yeah.
Brown?
Yes.
Bilski?
Yes.
Lee Meyer?
Yes.
Yes.
Sid?
Yes. Motion passes five, two absent.
Madam Chair, motion to suspend rules?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to suspend with the rules. Roll call, please.
Brown?
Yes.
Bilski?
Yeah.
Lee Meyer?
Yes.
Yes.
Pam?
Yeah.
Sid?
Yes. Motion passes five, two absent.
Madam Chair, motion to approve nineteen eighty-two on second reading?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded? Discussion? Roll call, please.
Bilski?
Yes.
Lee Meyer?
Yes.
Pam?
Yeah.
Brown?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes, motion passes five, two absent. All right, thank you.
Yeah, I got it.
Acknowledgements and announcements. I do have a few, but does anyone have anything? I'll read them quickly. Um, of course, we want to extend our condolences to Councilman, uh, Ron Brewer and his family and the passing of his wife, uh, Nicole Man Brewer. Um, September is National Hispanic Heritage Month. There are several festivities that you can attend. I know E Chicago is having, the UVM uh, organization is having their one hundred and first parade and festival. So, it's at the E Chicago Marina. The parade starts at Block Stadium at noon. Uh, September seventeen, this Constitution and Citizenship Day. Uh, September twenty-second, American Businesswoman's Day. All right, anyone else? All right, Coroner's Office. Councilman Lee Meyer, do you have the agenda in front of you? Or would you like someone, uh?
Could, could, um, whoever else is on that committee, take this item, please?
Okay, Charlie Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Brown?
Madam President, this, uh, I'll make a motion to create a new line item in the coroner's office for Motherhood and Kempton Health Initiative Program Grant. Eight, one, two, six, dash, six, two, two, five, five, Pathology Supplies. And, uh.
Second.
I'll prove.
So, a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded? Okay, we're gonna, uh, I'm sorry. I was just reminded, we're creating a new line item. We need to defer this to the, uh, next meeting October fourteenth. We need six votes to create a new line item. So, that means, uh, item B will also have to be deferred.
Madam Chair, make, uh, motion to defer items number five A and five B until next month's meeting?
Is there a second?
Sure.
Motion's been made and seconded?
Uh, wait, Madam Chairman? Uh, to, to our next available meeting, that that could be on the agenda. So, if we so choose to put it on the nineteenth, I believe we could. The sixteen.
Yes.
Sixteen.
Sixteen. Okay, so.
Our, our next meeting, if, if that's when.
The next meeting.
Is that when you want to do it?
I'm fine with that.
Everybody? Yeah?
Yep, okay.
Then that's my motion.
Okay. Uh, motion's been made, um, and seconded. All in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Peter Bowles?
Madam Chairman, I need to make a motion to approve ordinance Number six A, an ordinance establishing a per diem for the Lake County Property Tax Assessment Board of Appeals, otherwise known as PETA Bowles. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Pam?
Yeah.
Brown?
Yes.
Bilski?
Yes.
Lee Meyer?
Yes.
Yes.
Sid?
Yes, motion passes five, two absent. Suspension?
Madam Chair, suspension of the rule, please.
Okay.
Motion's been made and seconded for suspension of the rules. Roll call, please.
Brown?
Yes.
Bilski?
Yes.
Lee Meyer?
Yes.
Pam?
Yeah.
Sid?
Yes, motion passes five, two absent.
Same problem on seven.
Madam Chairman, make a motion to approve six A on second read?
Motion's been made and seconded to and seconded to adopt the ordinance to statute per diem for Lake County Property Tax Board of Appeals. Um, discussion? Roll call, please.
Bilski?
Yes.
Lee Meyer?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes, motion passes five, two absent. Again, we have the creation of a new line item, so we need a motion to defer both A and B.
Um, so move. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for deferment until the next meeting?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, all in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Randy. Motion passes five, two absent. All right, Juvenile Court?
Madam Chair, I move for approval in Department forty oh five for a revised one forty-four out of the general fund effective eight eleven of this year for probation officer one two four two eight dash zero one six, currently at eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars, proposed at forty-two thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars for a difference of savings of thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and eight dollars.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded? Discussion?
Madam Chairman, real briefly, on this electronic meeting issue, I believe that reduction of a salary is not allowed to be voted on electronically. So, Mr. Councilman Lee Meyer's vote, uh, cannot be taken on this.
Okay.
All right.
Let's draw my second.
You know, you can, you can still vote. Okay, yeah, there's.
Yeah, but, oh, yes, never mind, we can still vote. Councilman Lee Meyer, we still have four here.
Randy, can both pass four again?
As long as it passes unanimously here. Okay.
Can Randy? Did you hear that?
I heard it.
Okay. Okay. Okay, uh, motion's been made and seconded. There's been discussion. Roll call, please.
Pam?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Bilski?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes, motion passes for
Present?
Two.
Absent?
Two.
And one.
Two absent, one not, not now, Joe. That's a first. Okay. Uh, do you know what you tend to say?
I can read that for you if you prefer.
What's that?
If Randy wants me to.
Read what?
The next item on the agenda, Nick.
Oh, Charlie.
Yeah.
Charlie, if Randy thought you want.
Yeah.
Look, go ahead.
Go.
Madam Chairman, make a motion to approve, uh, ninety-eight transfer out of the general fund from, uh, six one one two zero professional eighty thousand dollars, six three two four zero telephone five thousand, two, six one one zero zero overtime eighty thousand, six two four one zero other supplies of five thousand and a grand total of eighty-five thousand dollars. I shall vote.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Motion passes five, two absent.
Madam Chairman, on number, item number nine B, uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve a transfer from the LCRD, uh, for Juvenile's Fund four three nine two. This would be a transfer from six four four, six four 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 zero motor vehicles of five thousand dollars, six four four nine zero other equipment of five thousand dollars, two, six two, two, three, zero clothing of ten thousand dollars, a grand total of ten thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Motion's been made and seconded? Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Motion passes five, two absent.
Yes.
Uh, Madam Chairman, make a motion to approve item number ten A. This is appropriation for the Lake County Highway Department, eleven oh two.
eleven oh two. Line item six four five hundred is construction, reconstruction of a grand total of one million two hundred fifty thousand dollars, I shall move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Brown?
Yes.
Bilski?
Yes.
Niemeyer?
Yes.
Ham?
Yeah.
Seid?
Yes, motion passes seven zero. I mean, uh, I'm so used to saying it, uh, five to absent. Lake County Sheriff?
Assistant Brown. Madam President, I move, uh, for a transfer in the Sheriff's Department, uh, General Fund one zero zero one, uh, from line six one one, it was zero, Protective Services, one hundred seventy-eight thousand from line two two, six two two one zero Petroleum Products, ten thousand from six three six two zero Equipment Repair, sixty thousand from six three, six three zero Maintenance and Service can, uh, seven, twenty-seven thousand and from six three nine nine five Public Services, thirteen thousand to, I'll press for it, to six one one zero zero overtime, fifty thousand six one one zero zero Office, Official and and Administrators, sixty-five thousand six one one three zero Technicians, thirty thousand six one one seven zero Skilled Craft Workers three thousand.
Thirty thousand.
No, it's three.
Three different technicians, skilled crafters. Skilled craft and, three, okay. Never mind, my fault, Charlie, sorry, buddy. I thought it was, uh.
Yeah.
Start over, Charlie.
Well.
Six one one nine zero Part-Time, thirty thousand and six two two three zero Clothing, a hundred ten thousand dollars for a total of two hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars.
I don't want to stop in the middle, but the officials and administrators line item is six one 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 zero, and he said six one one zero zero.
Okay, duly noted. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Uh, Chief, can you remind, was the clothing for inmates?
The clothing on this part was for sheriff, and that was for, um, due to the fact that we have the new hires, we need to buy new equipment for those new hires, about fifty-five hundred dollars per officer. We also have, or be hired, seven approximately officers by the end of the year, and also we have a project to replace these twenty-five body on which carriers that are expired. So all these that we need to replace every five years to keep all that equipment in check and.
Okay. Um, any other discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Aye opposed.
Aye.
Motion passes five to absent. Ordinance?
There's a, Madam President.
Yes, Councilman.
My ordinance and from the Sheriff's Department, establishing the Lake County Sheriff's Comprehensive Highway, excuse me, Injury Reduction Program. I so move. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Bilski?
Yes.
Niemeyer?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Seid?
Yes, motion passes five to absent.
Also in the Sheriff's Department, the request for, uh, grant application.
Yeah, excuse me, Councilman Brown, do you? Yeah. You want the suspension?
Suspend the rule. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to suspend with the rules. Roll call, please.
Niemeyer?
Yes.
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Bilski?
Yes.
Seid?
Yes, motion passes five to absent.
We, uh, we pass this on second reading. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve on second reading. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Ham?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Bilski?
Yes.
Niemeyer?
Yes.
Seid?
Yes, motion passes five to absent. Grant application, Councilman Brown or whomever.
The Sheriff's Department request, uh, uh, Fiscally, twenty-five State Homeland Security Program and enduring needs, new, this is a new grant application. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you, motion passes five to absent.
Is this a new convention?
No, it's got a different.
Sheriff's Department is also requesting a State Homeland Security Program, a national priority, uh, grant. I so move. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. I have just one question, is, are these grants going to cause more overtime?
No.
Because I, I, I didn't realize we were, again, transferring to overtime, which is costing the county uh, quite a bit now, so they are not, okay. Okay, um, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes five to absent. Jail. Councilman Brown?
Uh, Madam President, there's a request from jail for a transfer, uh, from the General Fund one zero zero one from line six one one zero one, overtime's right, overtime regular, one hundred thousand dollars. Six one one four zero Protective Services, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Six to line two two three zero Clothing, five thousand from line six two two six zero Jail Inmate Clothing Allowance, seventy thousand from line six three one eight eight Employment Testing, forty thousand, and from line six three one nine zero Other Professional Services, a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. All of that's transferred to line six one one zero zero Overtime, two hundred thousand. Six one one nine zero Part-Time, a hundred and thirty thousand, and six three nine two zero Food and Lodging, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a total of five hundred eighty thousand dollars. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion.
Second.
What's that? Oh, okay, um, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes five to absent.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. There's, there's more.
Uh, if you want, let me cover the jail for here.
Go ahead, Mr. Bilski. Councilman Bilski.
Uh, item twelve B, um, Madam Chairman, make a motion to approve transfer for the misdemeanor county jail Housing Fund eleven fifty-two from six three six three zero Mickelson Services of twelve thousand five hundred to six one one six zero Office and Clerk of twelve thousand dollars, six one three two zero by deductions of five hundred dollars, which is a total of twenty, twelve thousand five hundred dollars, so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, signify by aye. Aye opposed. Motion passes five to absent.
Madam Chairman, make a motion to defer twelve C, the creation of a new line item, public next available nation.
Miss Councilman, if I heard that, um, Councilman Linda Mulder may join us, so maybe we just.
We could go back to it if he shows up.
Either way.
For the first of clarity, because I can make, I have to add to the agenda one item anyway.
Mm-hmm.
When we get to the end, if he's not here, if he's here.
We can come back to this.
Good.
Mm-hmm.
Or, uh, or the way.
I simply wait and come back to it.
Whatever you want, your pleasure, okay? Uh, so, just going to skip number.
Yeah, C and D.
C and D.
Okay, Animal Control?
Uh, Madam Chairman, make a motion to approve a transfer from the General Fund for Animal Control Department, eighty oh four, six two two five zero Healthcare and Lab Supplies of ten thousand, six three nine nine two, six three nine nine five Other Services in Charge of an Equal Amount, a grand total of ten thousand dollars.
Okay.
Motion's made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes five to absent.
Madam Chairman, make a motion to approve Item Number Thirteen B. This is a transfer from the Lake County Animal Shelter and Non-Reverting Fund, forty one sixty-three, from six two two five zero Healthcare and Lab Supplies of eight thousand dollars to line item six three nine nine five Other Services in Charge of eight thousand dollars for a grand total of eight thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Madam Chairman.
Opposed. Motion passes five to absent. Okay, go ahead. Jag Grant?
If you'd so please, I'll, uh, Sheriff Jag Grant, uh, twenty twenty grant out of eighty eleven transfer Justice Assistant Grant Fund eighty two sixty-two from six three two three six Travel Training, thirteen thousand one hundred and twenty dollars to six two four one zero Other Supplies of thirteen thousand one hundred and twenty dollars for the grand total of thirteen thousand one hundred and twenty dollars or so.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes five to absent. Yeah, that's, that's all they have, except those two items.
You can do C. I mean, A and B, we have to hold off on because we need six numbers to create a new line item, but I think you can do C, can't you, Madam Chair?
Where are you at?
Uh, you could do C fifteen.
Fifteen C.
Oh, fifteen. Well, fifteen is prosecutor.
Right.
Yeah.
Just can't do the.
Oh, oh, I got you, okay, yeah. Right, so, yeah, we can do C.
Madam Chair, move for approval of a.
No, we can't.
Okay.
Is it a different fund? Okay, it is, okay. It's going to be sure, it's a different fund. Nine one two eight.
Ready?
Ready.
Move for approval of an appropriation Prosecutor's Careful Carter Gun Safety Literacy Grant Fund, nine one two eight, six three three one zero Printing, forty-eight hundred dollars, and six three three nine zero Other Services, twenty-five hundred dollars for a total of seventy-three hundred dollars.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. Roll call, please.
I'm sorry, seconded that motion.
I do.
Brown?
Yes.
Linda Mulder, I'm sorry. Bilski?
Yes.
Niemeyer?
Thanks. Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Seid?
Yes, motion passes five to absent. You're being hopeful. Uh, motion passes five to absent. Criminal Public Defender. Councilman Ham?
Uh, in Department ninety oh two, I move for an approv, approval of an appropriation Supplemental Public Defender Fund, fourteen oh five, uh, sect one two three one Court Reporter, per diem, fifty thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Bilski?
Yes.
Niemeyer?
Yes.
Ham?
Yeah.
Brown?
Yes.
Seid?
Yes, motion passes five to absent. Emergency Management.
Madam President, uh, there's a request for a grant application for twenty twenty-five State Homeland Security Pro, a Grant Program. Uh, this is a grant removal, a renewal. I so move. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion passes. Thank you.
Madam President, there is a second, uh, grant request, uh, Emergency Management Performance Grant. I so move.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes five to absent. Lake County Commissioners?
Madam President, uh, is a request for a resolution. The transfer of one million two hundred and thirty-three thousand, two hundred and thirty-four and twenty-five hundred, from CD from number two thousand, twenty twelve to Lake County Road and Bridges Matching Grant Fund, uh, Fund nine four four zero. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. All in favors, uh, this is, um, uh, roll call, please.
Niemeyer?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Brown?
Yeah.
Bilski?
Yes.
Seid?
Yes, motion passes five to absent. Right, Pete. Um, Public Hearing, oh, no, we did that. Okay, Citizens Appointment, I now open up nominations for the County Domestic Violence Fatality Review Team, uh, Child Protective Service Employee.
Madam Chairman, nominate Eric Legazowski.
Say that last.
Letter in the, okay.
Okay, are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I now hereby appoint Eric. What was that last name?
Legazowski.
Legazowski. To the County Domestic Violence Fatality Review Team. Okay, Councilman Bilski?
Madam Chairman, I have to make a motion to add an ordinance to the agenda. This is an ordinance restricting the hiring of new county employees until nine thirty of twenty-six.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion.
For the record, if you'd like to make some adjustments, resolution or dead enough.
The ordinance.
The ordinance, I'm sorry.
I think we, I think we need to vote on the amendment of the agenda first, right?
Oh, yes, thank you for that reminder.
I just didn't know, I just didn't know, Randy, thank you for adding, but I didn't know if, uh, during this point in time would be the spot that I would explain the resolution and why I wanted to add it to the agenda, but.
Yeah, we.
Not a need, we can vote on it and just go right to the vote. I'm kind of ready to get out of here, too.
Yeah, we don't usually, we make a motion to add an item to agenda, we don't usually make a motion to amend the agenda.
No, I'm sorry, I meant, I, I stand.
I'm just adding.
To the agenda, I say amend the agenda, I meant to say add, add the resolution to the agenda.
Yeah. Okay, um, there was a second, there, well, there was a motion and a second to add the ordinance to the agenda. Discussion.
Madam Chairman, I guess at this point in time, as there is a need for me to read the detail into there, it should be made available to everyone, but uh, in regards to the budget type, the gist of this is, is that we've had to eliminate some vacated positions in order to save approximately one million dollars in the budget. So these positions, and there's exclusions, those that are covered under CBAs have been cut out. So if you remember during the budget workshop, this is just to follow up on that for those positions. Uh, inside, as there is an appeal process, uh, I don't know, Council, you said, you want to elaborate?
Yes, we can, the departments are, are, may, uh, come before the council and request to refill those positions. They, they just have to come before the council. It also excludes those who all have already been offered a position with the county, so.
It, it was brought to my, exactly, especially in the assessor's office, that if there's a level three position that's open, it's going to take a while for that person to get up there, so we don't want to eliminate a position that is unable to be filled, maybe with attorneys and law enforcement and others as well, so.
Yes.
We're aware of that, we're just trying to do everything from our end to shape one.
So the vote now, if there's any further discussion?
To add it to the agenda.
Yes, just add to the agenda, so, okay, uh, roll call.
Ham?
Yeah.
Brown?
Yes.
Bilski?
Yes.
Niemeyer?
Yes.
Seid?
Yes, motion passes five to absent. Okay, now, do we want to, uh, vote on the.
Madam Chairman, uh, I'd like to put the Hiring Freeze, uh, ordinance for, I'd like to approve the Hiring Freeze Race, that I assigned a number to the agenda, I'm sorry, Doc?
No, just the ordinance, they'll do that later.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Brown?
Yes.
Bilski?
Yes.
Niemeyer?
Yes.
Ham?
Yeah.
Seid?
Yes, motion passes five to absent. Okay, now, we, we do need to go back to, oh, wait.
Motion to suspend the rule.
Oh, thank you. Motion's been made and seconded to suspend with the rules. Roll call, please.
Bilski?
Yes.
Niemeyer?
Yes.
Ham?
Yeah.
Brown?
Yes.
Seid?
Yes, motion. Yes, motion passes five to absent.
Madam Chairman, make a motion to approve on second reading, second.
Motion's been made a second to approve on second reading, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Lee Meyer.
Yes.
Pam.
Yes.
Brown.
Yeah.
Belski.
Yeah.
Seid.
Yes, motion passes five to absent. Uh, I don't know if Pete's still gonna be able to jump on, but I know Mr. Popovich is here and he wanted to give us a little update. He's our appointee to the sports, what's the name of that organization?
Northwest Indiana Sports Golf.
Thank you, thank you. And thank you, we appreciate you coming and giving you an update.
My pleasure, uh, uh, members of the council, uh, Madam President. Uh, we've had two meetings so far, the first one was basically an organizational meeting where we elected, uh, officers of our, uh, of board. Commission, I should say, uh, we elected, um, uh. Uh, Jay Wilkinson from, uh, Hoosier Investments, he's from Mishawaka. He's Governor Braun's appointment to the board, uh, he was nominated by Tom McDermott, uh, to chair the board and, uh, unanimously elected. Uh, Mayor Tom McDermott was elected vice chairman of the board. And, uh, Phil Tullen, uh, was elected as our treasurer. Um, to kick our. Commission off, since, um, it passed with legislation but no funding, uh, Mayor McDermott graciously donated five thousand dollars from the city of Hammond. Uh, toward our operations, and so we talked amongst ourselves about going back to the, uh, representative board to see if they can make such a nominal fee until. Representative Harris could put a bill together, uh, in the next session to get funding for our organization. It's just for incidental costs and, you know, to cover operations for. It'll probably be a year before we get any kind of funding from, uh, the state legislature on that. So, something for you to consider in your next budget, um, I would be appreciative if you could do that. Um, we talked about a lot of different things going forward, in our second meeting, we talked about, uh, basically, um. Uh, cultivating relationships with people in the sports industry, especially on the professional side. Uh, reaching out to owners of minor league teams in the region, like, uh, Andrew Berlin from the Southland Cubs. Basically counsel and advise us on directions, uh, I've been tasked with reaching out to John List, who's the chair of economics at. The University of Chicago, who's a. A sports nut, um, no other way to say it, but John is a part owner in two minor league teams as well as. Many other things he does, so I'm reaching out to him, he's a personal friend of mine to come and basically talk to us about the in, economic impacts. Of what it could bring to Northwest Indiana. I do have a recap of my notes that I want to submit to. Uh, the president here, and, uh, you can.
Okay.
Add to your package, and if there's any questions so far, there's not a lot of. Details to add, uh, we're still getting formulated and off the ground, so our meetings have been relatively brief, so. But, uh, a lot of excitement.
Yeah.
Just, um. Things like this take time, so.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions?
It's a total. Membership of the committee.
We have seventeen members, uh, stretching from Lake County all the way to St. Joseph County.
And they all have been appointed?
Yes, either, uh, mayors have either appointed themselves, or they've appointed somebody to represent them. Um, councils, uh, county councils have rep, have appointed representatives as well. So we have a little bit of everyone, who's got a unique background on there, uh, I bring a background from sports, people bring a background from economics, people bring a background from tourism. So, uh, I think it's a really good board, to tell you the truth, and, um. I think we did a good job by electing a, a chairman that can get things done downstate.
Yes.
Uh, uh, Jay is really, um, um, Jay Wilkinson's really tight with, uh, the governor, so. That's very important in getting funding in the future.
Yeah, that's very helpful.
Yeah, may not be good for some of those.
Okay, all right.
Other questions?
Nope. Randy, are you still on? Do you have any questions?
No questions.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. All right, so I don't see Pete online, so we need to go back to.
Madam Chair, please.
Item twelve. Defirm it.
For the agenda, item number twelve, she is in Charlie.
You're gonna, can we just, okay.
Yeah, C and D, C and D, make.
There you go.
Read, uh, uh.
Defer.
Defer to the next meeting.
Next meeting.
Twelve C, maybe David.
Okay, most, motions been made to defer to the next meeting, discussion. All in favor, signify by aye. Aye opposed. Motion passes five to absent.
Madam Chair, if we go to page five. Uh, item number fifteen, A and B, make a motion to defer to the next meeting.
Motion's been made and seconded to defer to the next meeting. Discussion, all in favor, signify by aye. Aye opposed. Thank you, motion passes five to absent. And I think, uh, public comment, anyone wish to speak? All right. Motion to adjourn.
Oh, it's adjourned. We, we reconvened in our study session at the.
The sixteen, budget workshop on the sixteen, what time is that meeting? One, one o'clock, okay. All right, um, all right, thank you, everybody, sorry for the delay. Thank you for showing up, Charlie.
Yeah, thank you, Charlie.
And thank you to the person that brought, made it possible.
Yeah, we're the chief, and.
Thank you.